Welcome to About Mansfield, your audio newspaper. I'm Steve Cassio with the May 17th, 2023, 173rd edition, always broadcasting from the SoMark Studios, along with Colleen Daniel and the About Mansfield news team. Coming up today, it's Mansfield news, sports, and weather for the upcoming week.
And a little later in the episode, you will have a chance to win a $25 gift card to a Mansfield restaurant of your choice with our Mansfield trivia question, courtesy of Joe Jenkins Farmers Insurance. Let's take a look at the stories we're covering this week.
Have you protested your property tax bill yet?
School board poised to tackle district book policy.
In sports, Lakewood baseball remains alive in the playoffs.
We have the seven day weather forecast. And in the talk segment, Steve talks with a local couple who are taking a leap of faith in the entrepreneurial world. We are Mansfield's only source for news, talk, and information. This is About Mansfield.
No matter your familiarity with buying or selling real estate, having an experienced, trusted advisor on speed dial is priceless. The Roger and Beth team of Century 21 Judge Fight is here to be that resource for you. Whether you're buying right here in Mansfield or your dreams are taking you elsewhere, we are ready to help you with turning that vision into a reality. To learn more, visit our website at homesinmansfield.com. That's homesinmansfield.com.
Hi, this is Paul Duncan with Trinity Roofing and Construction. There are over 7,500 roofers in the North Texas area. And when a major hailstorm blows through town, that number skyrockets with companies as far away as Montana. In the planning stages of re-roofing your home, it's normal for customers to ask questions such as, where are they based out of? And how many years' experience do they have roofing in North Texas? Trinity Roofing and Construction can answer each of these questions with confidence. As a family-owned, Mansfield-based business since 2011, Trinity Roofing and Construction recently received a Product Excellence Award by Owens Corning and are a Platinum Preferred Contractor with Owens Corning. Contact us today for a free, no obligation video roof inspection. Rated A+ with the Better Business Bureau, Trinity Roofing and Construction, a Mansfield company not only replacing roofs, but building relationships. Find us on the web at trinityroofingconstruction.com. That's trinityroofingconstruction.com.
Hi, this is John with PoolAid, your local pool care specialist. With the exceptional amount of rain that we've experienced so far this year, spring is a vital time to clean pool filters, skim leaves and debris, and keep skimmers clean to ensure proper circulation as well as keep your pool sweep in good working condition. If you have any questions or concerns, or need a certified professional to help keep your pool safe and clean, visit us on the internet at poolaid.net. That's poolaid.net. We're here for you.
Hello, this is Mayor Michael Evans, and you're listening to About Mansfield.
Welcome back to About Mansfield.
It isn't over until the review board rules. Higher-than-normal property valuations have residents worried about a steep tax bill that's coming in October, but homeowners have the right to appeal their valuation. Mansfield residents living in Tarrant County received letters with their valuation back in April and have until May 30th to make an appeal with the Tarrant Appraisal District. The district determines the value of residents' properties. The property has to be taxed based on its current market value or the price it will sell for when both the buyer and seller seek the best price. Everyone has the right to contest their property value. But how does one go about filing a protest? Well, there are three levels of protest. The easiest is an automated online protest. It takes about two minutes. You log on to tad.org. The second is an informal, in-person protest. No appointment necessary. Just call the telephone number on your appraisal notice to set that up. The third is a formal appraisal review board or ARB hearing. Yes, an appointment is required. The board is made up of simple residents that hear disagreements between property owners and the appraisal district about the proposed value of the property. When you go in front of the board, be prepared with photos to back your claims and some comps about how much homes are selling for in your neighborhood. Be sure to review the hearing procedures and present your information in a simple, well-organized manner. Be concise and prepared to show the not-so-pretty side of your home. Once you're finished speaking or you've reached your allotted time, you will not be allowed to speak again. Attitude is everything. Phrases like "this is ridiculous" or "these figures are a joke" will get you nowhere. In fact, the appraisal board will be less likely to cooperate with those who have a chip on their shoulder. If you don't want to go it alone, there are dozens of services around the Mansfield area that will represent you, usually charging a percentage of the amount of money that you saved.
The Mansfield ISD school board was expected to vote Tuesday night on changing the district's library book approval policy, essentially removing the approval process from the individual librarians and running all books through the hands of the trustees. A similar policy was enacted by the Keller ISD in hopes of banning certain books from campus libraries. In November of 2022, the Foundation for Individual Rights and Expression, or FIRE, released a statement that Keller ISD's new restrictions violate the First Amendment. The new policy bans books based not on their educational value or age-level appropriateness, but on objection to viewpoints and ideas themselves. About Mansfield reached out to Board President and Trustee spokesperson Courtney Lackey-Wilson for comment and received no reply. The school board met on Tuesday night, but well after our 12 noon deadline. We will have an update to this story on our About Mansfield News Talk Facebook page.
In sports, it's Lakewood, the lone MISD baseball team to reach the regional semifinals, which takes place Thursday through Saturday versus Rockwall. Lakewood plays host on Thursday night on their home turf while Friday night's game moves to Rockwall. Both games start at 7:00 PM, and if needed, a third and final game will be played at a neutral location, Dallas Jesuit High School on Saturday starting at noon. Tickets for all of the games? Just five bucks. If you have a comment about the show, the news, or whatever's on your mind locally, we welcome your input. Grant is no stranger to our listener comment line.
Dear Mansfield ISD school board, specifically the ones that were previously endorsed by Patriot Action Mobile, please don't take us into these manufactured culture wars that have been introduced in their endorsed school boards in northern Tarrant County. Patriot Action Mobile candidates in DFW School District lost pretty substantially in this last election, losing 10 elections, and two that they did win were won with less than 50%, showing a majority of citizens don't want their ideologies permeating our districts. Three of the four candidates on our school board that were endorsed by Patriot Action Mobile have created unnecessary chaos this year. Bianca Benavides Anderson was arrested for domestic family violence. Craig Tipping had to pay a fine for several campaign finance violations. And Kezia Farrar has recently been accused of writing speeches for citizens to read on her behalf at school board meetings, including a school board candidate. So much for these campaign promises of safety and integrity. This past school year, there have been substantial increases in guns and other weapons found on campuses across the district, an increase in fights, teacher shortages, and substitute shortages. Instead of focusing on solutions for those serious issues, Kezia Farrar has chosen to focus on two books, of which there are three copies in the entire school district that 99.9% of students either don't have access to or will never read. She protested these books, asked that they be removed from the curriculum, and her challenge was correctly denied because they aren't part of the curriculum. Because she didn't get her way, they are now attempting to implement a school board policy for books that was recently implemented at Keller ISD. This policy states that the school board would have to approve all books before they could go on shelves, even if they were already approved. To explain this further, if a child rips pages out of the Cat in the Hat and the book needs to be replaced, it would sit in a box waiting for the school board to approve the book to get on the shelf. There are tens of thousands of books in the district, similar to Keller ISD, where classroom libraries are now sitting empty and school libraries are half-empty because the school board hasn't had time to approve the books. There are boxes of books scattered across all of the school campuses waiting for approval. MISD already has a policy where parents can restrict library access to their children should they desire that. It's a great solution that has been working. The school board is a board of directors. A board of directors is supposed to guide the direction of the district and not get into the day-to-day activities like approving individual books. After the recent mass shooting at the Allen Outlet Mall and the large amount of gun and weapon incidents at our campuses, especially in the last few weeks, let's focus on keeping our kids safe like you campaigned on. The Cat in the Hat never hurt anyone in our school district, but sadly, a gun has. Stop manufacturing issues and focus your energy on the ones already in plain sight.
So what's on your mind? You can reach us by voicemail at 817-435-2938. Again, that's 817-435-2938. This coming Monday, May 22nd, is National Buy a Musical Instrument Day. It's no secret that students who study music score higher on the SAT than those who don't. Monday may be a good day for you to start your own musical journey. Why? Because music is so much more than just playing notes. Music is a science. Music is math. Music is a foreign language. It's history. It's physical education. But most of all, music is art. Educators teach music so their students will be more human, to recognize beauty, to be sensitive, to be closer to an infinite beyond this world, so they have something to cling to, so they have more to love, more compassion, more gentleness, more good, or in short, more life. As an adult, you can experience those same life qualities, and it's never too late to start playing an instrument. Here's a pro tip. Some instruments are harder to play than others. Start with the easy ones. So on Monday, go buy a musical instrument, and if needed, take a lesson or two, and then start playing music. Let's head on over to the weather desk and check the forecast for the upcoming week. Colleen?
Let's take a look at the weather for the next seven days in Mansfield, Texas. After a moist start to the week, we're going to dry out a bit. Our only notable chance of rain is a 50% chance on Friday, probably overnight, depending on the speed of a cold front currently scheduled to move through during the day on Friday. We're looking at a high of 82 degrees on Wednesday, 88 degrees on Friday ahead of the cold front, 80 degrees on Sunday, and 85 degrees on Tuesday. Coming up after the break, we turn the page to the features section.
I'm Angel Biasati. Allergy season never ends in North Texas, and we'll talk about it in Methodist Mansfield News to Know.
I'm Beth Stiney, and today on the Mansfield Real Estate Report, we are going to talk through common mistakes made by homebuyers that can short-circuit the home buying process.
In this week's Cocktail of the Week, I'll be talking about a cocktail that will have you going to the store to find some fresh strawberries and ginger.
We are Mansfield's only source for news, talk, and information. I'm Colleen Daniel, and this is About Mansfield.
I'm Philip Washington, Chief Investment Officer of Stonehill Wealth Management and host of the Wealth Building Made Simple podcast. First book I read in college was Rich Dad, Poor Dad, and it changed my life. And since then, I've read tons and tons of books on money. And what I've done is taken those lessons, simplified them, and I talk about those lessons on the podcast Wealth Building Made Simple. So come hang out with us. We're on every major platform, Apple Podcasts, Spotify, and on YouTube. Wealth Building Made Simple.
At Methodist Mansfield Medical Center, we've been caring for our home team for over 15 years. Today, you'll find award-winning physicians on the medical staff, advanced neurosurgery, a Level 3 trauma center, critical care for newborns, and comprehensive orthopedic care. Methodist Mansfield, delivering the care our friends, neighbors, and home team depend on. That's community, and why so many people trust Methodist.
The housing market is evolving as interest rates rise to meet inflation. Speculation abounds as to what the future may hold. Do you have a trusted advisor? The Roger and Beth team at Century 21 Judge Fight should be your first call in all matters concerning real estate and the market. We specialize in residential real estate for both buyers and sellers. With industry partners across North America, our resources and expertise can turn the home you've been envisioning into a reality. Visit our website at homesinmansfield.com to learn more. That's homesinmansfield.com.
Congratulations to our latest trivia question winner, Matthew Riley. Last week, we asked for you to be the first to answer this question. In what year did the first post office in Mansfield open? Matthew knew that it was 1860. Incidentally, our city's co-founder, Julian Field, was appointed as the first Postmaster General in Mansfield. Matthew has won a $25 gift card to a Mansfield restaurant of his choice. When we come back, this week's trivia question, this is About Mansfield.
Hey, it's Steve Cassio. I wanted to take a second to tell you about Podcast Mansfield Recording Studio 3.0. It's where we record and produce the About Mansfield podcast episodes. What started out as an audio-only studio, Podcast Mansfield is now a full-service audio and video recording studio, complete with custom green screen backgrounds, two high-definition cameras, editing, mixing, and mastering capabilities, and we can also help market your podcast. Podcast Mansfield is home to such great locally-produced shows such as Wealth Building Made Simple, We Are TPM, and Wealth Think Tank Television, just to name a few. So whether you're a hands-on person or just need a place to record your podcast, or need advice from concept to completion, Podcast Mansfield is here to help. Conveniently located on Heritage Parkway just off of 287, right here in Mansfield, mention the About Mansfield podcast, and you get to record your first episode at no charge. For more information on starting your podcast, or if you're looking for a better place to record, Podcast Mansfield Recording Studio can be found on the internet at podcastmansfield.com.
Hi, this is Joe Jenkins with Joe Jenkins Farmers Insurance, specializing in auto, home, commercial, and life insurance.
I was born and raised here in Mansfield, Texas. We're active in the community, and Mansfield's a town we really care about. Our office has over 30 years' experience in the insurance industry, and we're passionate about what we do and about customer service. For a free quote, please visit our website at joejenkinsinsurance.com or give us a call at 817-472-6058. Once again, that website is joejenkinsinsurance.com.
It is right now, at this very moment, time for the highly coveted, wildly popular About Mansfield trivia question. If you are the first person to email the correct answer to trivia@aboutmansfield.com, you will receive a $25 gift card to a Mansfield restaurant of your choice, and it's brought to you by Joe Jenkins Insurance. Whether you're looking for homeowners, auto, commercial, or any other type of insurance, Joe has helped Mansfield area residents understand the insurance coverage that best fit their needs since 2010. You can find him on the internet at joejenkinsinsurance.com. And I mention this every week, not every winner submits their answer on Wednesdays. If you're listening on Thursday, Friday, Saturday, whenever, you know what? Give it a shot. You may be taking home a $25 restaurant gift card. Let's get to this week's question, Colleen.
Well, Steve, the Blessing Funeral Home sits atop the hill at 401 East Elm Street in historic Mansfield in a building that was constructed in 1877, which was on the western edge of the Mansfield male and female college campus. This week's trivia question is, what was the Blessing Funeral Home's two-story building originally used for in 1877? Email your answer to trivia@aboutmansfield.com. Again, what was the Blessing Funeral Home's two-story building originally used for in 1877? Good luck, and thanks to Joe Jenkins Insurance for the gift card.
Hi, I'm Scott Bowman, and you're listening to About Mansfield.
Welcome back to About Mansfield, your audio newspaper. Let's open up the features section. Angel Biasati is here and gives you the breakdown on allergy medications in Methodist Mansfield News to Know. Angel?
Allergy season is all year round in Texas, especially when plants begin to pollinate. And our antihistamines, also known as allergy medications, safe to use every day indefinitely? That depends on the drug. Some highly effective sprays can become habit-forming and create rebound symptoms, while the latest generation of antihistamines almost have no side effects. Allergy medications may be safely used, like an antihistamine pill or corticosteroid spray, without fear of forming a habit or building up tolerance. There are nearly no long-term concerns at all with these allergy medications. However, some do have a few precautions. Antihistamine medications work by blocking the chemicals that cause us to suffer an allergic reaction. Dimetap, Nyquil, Benadryl target histamine receptors in the nervous system and can cause drowsiness because they cross what's called the blood-brain barrier. They are stronger for reducing allergy symptoms, but they don't last all day. This type of medication may cause confusion and can cause falls among senior adults. Research has linked their long-term use to an increased risk of dementia. If you suffer from heart disease, high blood pressure, asthma, or emphysema, ask your physician what allergy medication is best to take. Antihistamines like Allegra, Zyrtec, Clarinex, Claritin, Zizol, to name a few, cause less drowsiness, and they last up to 24 hours. These drugs interact with fewer medications. So if you're taking a lot of prescriptions, the newer antihistamines might be a safer bet, but always ask your physician which ones are best for you to take. Many allergy sufferers turn to sprays for relief. They're safe as well. Saline rinses are the natural way to keep nasal passages clean and moist and ease sinus inflammation, whether using over-the-counter squirt bottle, a homebrew of distilled water and kosher salt, or a neti pot. Those are proven ways to clear pollen and other allergens from the mucous membranes. The bottom line is that most of these medications are safe to take on a daily basis. Some patients take more than one. Some even mix and match a nasal spray with an antihistamine pill. But taking preventative medication forever may not be for everyone. There may be a better option for allergy sufferers who can't find relief no matter how many drugs they take. If you're struggling taking two, three, four medications a day, I encourage you to consider making yourself less allergic. That means a trip to a specialist who can offer an allergy test and treatment. Reporting for About Mansfield, I'm Angel Biasati with Methodist Mansfield News to Know.
Realtor Beth Stiney is here with Common Mistakes That Buyers Experience in the Mansfield Real Estate Market Update. Beth?
On our third installment of home buying in 2023, we are covering some of the common mistakes and pitfalls that buyers experience. It can be heartbreaking after working so hard to put your finances in order and the amount of work, both physical and emotional, that it takes to navigate home buying, only to get setback by a home inspection or an appraisal that doesn't quite fit the careful plans you've made. According to the Chin Institute of Global Real Estate Finance at New York University, the first thing buyers can really misjudge is where we are in the overall real estate market cycle, including the cost of financing, the strength of buying power, and availability of homes. This is crucial for buyers. Setting expectations about what this process will look like. As you know, not everyone listens to this podcast yet and doesn't get the kind of insider information that you do. We also need buyers to consider where they are in the life cycle of their household. I cannot tell you how many times I see buyers strapping themselves to large properties that take an immense amount of upkeep that either costs valuable time or money. I'll never forget the elderly seller I had that was moving into assisted living, but had two storage units filled with furniture and yard equipment, you know, just in case. On the surface, it was baffling, but of course, we understood the underlying psychological need to hold on to those items. This was after they did a living estate sale, which was one of the hardest things I've ever witnessed people have to endure. So understanding what your next five to 10 years looks like is important when buying a home, well, or selling one. Your life cycle is equally as important when you consider the age of the home you're buying. The cost of appliances or system repair may make new construction look like a much better bargain. I've been known to say, as real estate agents, we've seen too much. You see mature trees, birds, and squirrels, and I see tree roots growing into the plumbing or rodent holes in the attic. We really do try to help our buyers see the positives and the negatives of all of their choices. Why do buyers make mistakes at all? Well, think about it. They are making a decision to spend a huge sum of money, sometimes in a high-pressure situation and generally with a lack of experience in home buying. The average 50-year-old may have bought three or four homes in their lifetime. That's not frequent enough to really understand what's happening, and sadly, many real estate agents don't take the time to orient buyers through the process. Rather, they just start showing homes. We do prefer to sit down with all of our potential buyers before we start the fun part. It can really make the whole process go so much more smoothly. Let's drill down to some more specifics. First up, the home inspection. We never recommend skipping the inspection. In fact, until 2020, 2021, and 2022, we never even saw this as an option. But buyers who are counting their pennies tend to assume the best and decide to skip the cost of the inspection, or maybe they'll pay for the general inspection and skip specialty inspections such as pools, septic, or the added expense of sending cameras down into the plumbing lines, for instance. But trust me when I say, this is all money well spent. Yes, you don't get this money back if you terminate, but that information is crucial for making the best decision about proceeding with this home. There are some things that should be deal breakers, and there are some things that are pretty easy to repair post-closing. For me, cast iron plumbing, recalled electrical panels, and mold would be high on the list of deal breakers. But broken window seals and the catchpan under the water heater, maybe not so much. Now, let's talk about what happens when you've gotten past the competition of getting your offer accepted, then past the tricky inspection, but now you have a low appraisal. What happens now? There are several things that can happen when the appraisal is low, and remember, this is very far into the process. Everyone is already packed and ready to move. Notice has been given to the landlord. The seller has a new place to live already secured, so the stakes are high to come to an agreement. The buyer can request that the seller come down to the appraised value. The buyer and the seller can meet somewhere in the middle, or the buyer can come up with a difference in cash. The lender can sometimes reduce the down payment, reconfigure the loan, in order to free up some cash for the buyer. But that's not always an option. Important thing to note here is that the buyer cannot force the seller to reduce the price, ever. An agreement must be reached or the deal is completely dead. Sure, the buyer will get their earnest money back, but they will also be out their option fee, their inspection fee, and the appraisal fee. Not to mention have to scramble to come up with a place to live. Real estate professionals work really hard to make sure the house will appraise before we list a property for sale or before we put an offer in. But even still, sometimes low appraisals can happen. The last mistake we'll cover in this episode is to not fully understand the effects your new community might have on your budget. Recently, I had a friend move from Arlington to a lake community. House is perfect. Price was perfect. But what she didn't know is that the community electric cooperative was really pricey. Her electric bill soared from 300 a month for her family to over 600 month after month. She was floored. These sorts of surprises are difficult to predict, but it never hurts to ask the seller for a list of utility bills for the last 12 months. Understanding your new community is important, from the availability of water, to the city's finances, to the county services, if you're outside city limits. Everyone should be able to buy a home with enough information to make a good decision that has a positive impact on their finances. After all, homeownership should build wealth, not reduce it. Do you have a real estate question I can answer? Send me a message via email to info@aboutmansfield.com. For the About Mansfield podcast, I'm Beth Stiney with Century 21 Judge Fight.
Shaken or stirred, either way, you know it's going to be good, as Brian Certain serves up a Kentucky Buck in the Cocktail of the Week. Brian?
This week's Cocktail of the Week is the Kentucky Buck. Last week, I started a new series on cocktails that I found on TikTok. This week's cocktail is from @NotJustABartender. I really like this guy's style, and he always gives great suggestions. But a little history on the Kentucky Buck. The Kentucky Buck was actually created by bartender Eric Castro for Polite Provisions, the award-winning bar in San Diego. There's an indication that this drink could possibly have been created for The Rick House, which was another bar that Castro consulted on. The cocktail takes its inspiration from the Buck, a classic highball drink which utilizes lime and fresh ginger syrup added to any base spirit and served lengthened with soda water. The Buck was the origin cocktail. The history's a little muddied, as we've discussed in the past, but I think that that same bar gave birth to the Moscow Mule, one of the few classics actually created in Los Angeles. But as always, don't worry about taking notes, as I'll be giving out the ingredients, instructions, and always posting them on bourbongospel.com. So ingredients, you're gonna need two ounces of a good bourbon. You know I'm a big fan of Evan Williams Bottled in Vine, but whatever good bourbon you have on hand will definitely work. You're gonna need one ounce of fresh, say it with me, fresh lemon juice, a half ounce of ginger syrup. Don't worry, I'll give you the recipe, and two to three fresh strawberries. You're gonna top this with ginger beer. You know I'm a big fan of Q ginger beer. I think it adds the right amount of ginger notes. Some people find it a little strong. If that's you, then go with something like the Fever Tree instead. The instructions, you're gonna add the strawberries, the lemon juice, and the ginger syrup to a muddling tin, and lightly muddle the strawberries. As an extra note, I actually added basil leaves to mine that gave it a little herbaceous note. After you've muddled that all together, you're gonna add your bourbon. You're then going to dry shake this. That means we're not adding ice to it, and you're gonna shake for about eight to 15 seconds. You're gonna add your ice to your glass. You're gonna then double-strain the cocktail into the glass and top with ginger beer. Again, here's a pro tip. Don't pour the ginger beer onto the ice cubes, and that will actually help save the carbonation. Pour it slightly into the liquid, and that will save that carbonation. And then garnish with a strawberry and a lemon with toothpicks to place at the end and a lemon with toothpicks to place at the edge of the glass. Ginger syrup is super simple to make at home. You make regular simple syrup. In my case, I used two cups of water. I used two cups of sugar, brought that all to a boil. As it was coming to a boil, I put freshly cleaned ginger in and diced it, and let it then bring to a boil. I then turned the heat off and let the ginger steep in the syrup for about a half hour. The longer, the better. You then strain the ginger out, put it into a bottle, and then you have fresh ginger syrup. The ginger syrup adds a nice little extra ginger kick to the cocktail, which my friends all found very, very pleasing. Again, I'm always open to hear your take and input. If you make this drink at home, you can always reach me at brian@bourbongospel.com. And until next week, as Mark Twain said, "Too much of anything is bad, but too much whiskey is barely enough." Reporting for the About Mansfield podcast, I'm Brian Certain.
Hi, this is Vanessa Ramirez, Assistant City Manager with the City of Mansfield, and you're listening to About Mansfield.
Welcome back to another segment of About Mansfield. I'm Steve Casio as we make the transition from news to talk. And in the studio today, he was one of my first interviews when we started the podcast back in 2020 at what we call the little studio that could, and that would be Studio 1.0. We're now in 3.0 here in the Selmark Building, and we welcome back, because he's got some entrepreneurial stuff going on, and welcome back Adam Larson to About Mansfield.
Steve Casio, thank you so much for having me back. I think I've been through every iteration of all your studios, and this one is just as good as all the rest. Good energy. I really appreciate you having me on.
And you brought someone with you.
A very important person.
A very important person to your, in your life.
Yeah, it's not just my business partner, but my partner in crime, my girlfriend Melissa Zelkey. I brought her with. So, this is her first podcast. I know we told her everything's gonna be okay. You're with a couple pros here, but yes, I brought her along for her first podcast, because I can remember ours, and so I'm excited to share this space with her.
And so, maybe, Melissa, your first time on a podcast, which, if I recall, Adam's first time on a podcast led to him developing his own podcast, The Face Off Spot. So, now that you are getting a, you're dipping your toe in the water, do you think there's a podcast in your?
You know, I, who knows what the future holds? I was not on my radar at all, but I'm having fun so far, so we'll see where things go.
Yeah, I still want to have her on my, my show at some point. So, you know, we're gonna get her warmed up, just like you did with me. But I do want to say before we start, just thank you, because you were the one that really got me going. You've given me tips, tricks, advice. You know, I came into your studio for the first probably 40 or 50 episodes, so just thank you.
Let's go ahead and start with The Face Off Spot. Your podcast, you, I know you've done over 100 episodes now.
Yeah, I think at almost, I think we're at like 140.
Wow.
I know, so we're getting up there. But, but once a week, because I took your advice about, you just need to do them. Just keep doing them. Keep putting them out. There's been a few weeks that I've missed, but for the most part, every week, there's a new guest, a new episode. Yeah, and it's been great.
Well, consistency is, is the key, is one of the keys to, to a successful podcast. It's like, you know that every Friday night, Blue Bloods is on CBS at nine o'clock, because it's consistent that, and so I think I have developed my listeners into knowing that every Wednesday morning, I'm not sure they're up at 3:00 AM when it drops.
Right.
But they know that when they get up on Wednesday morning, when they wake up, there's boom, there's a podcast waiting for them.
And it can be kind of a cool thing, too, because I have certain people that, because we released early morning Thursday, so it's, you know, kind of in the middle of the night, and there'll be some people that'll text me, you know, by the afternoon, the next day, they're like, "No episode this week?" Because there are times to where either episode hasn't come out, or we've just had to release it a little bit later, but it's like, "Oh, they're listening," or else they wouldn't text me. They know that it's not out, or, but yeah. But consistency also helps you grow your listener base, and all it takes is taking a couple weeks off, and I also think that consistency keeps me sharp.
The Face Off Spot is based on hockey?
It is.
It is based on your career?
Yeah, it is.
Tell the people what you do for a living.
So, I am the, I do a lot of things at the rink, but I guess my main, my main thing there is the operations manager, which essentially I am in charge of taking care of the ice, which would fall under Zamboni driving, so I train the Zamboni drivers. Yeah, so I try and keep the refrigeration plant, the building looking clean and safe for everybody to come into, but I also coach. So, last year, I coached 12 U, so that's kids 12 and under. We had a good season. Melissa's son was on that team. We had a really good year. I also give skating lessons, private lessons, so I'm there all the time, but I love it.
When you say the rink, we, of course, we're talking about them.
The Mansfield Star Center.
The Mansfield.
Which I almost, it's funny, when I talk to people, I almost never call it that. I just call it the rink, because you know, it's the rink, you know, the rink. So, yeah, Mansfield Star Center.
It's the only rink in Mansfield.
Yeah, it is the only rink in Mansfield.
Melissa?
Yes.
Now, what, tell me about your background. This is the first time you and I really have had a chance to talk. I see you at the spot, which we'll, we'll talk about, but your background.
Yeah, well, I'm, let's see, I've been in Texas about six years now.
Where you from?
Oh, I'm from all over. I'm a state jumper. I originally from Iowa, Des Moines area, but I actually grew up in Colorado, spent about nine years in Northern California before coming here. And through all that time, my career has been in restaurant, the restaurant industry, mainly in the catering channel of things. So, working between the restaurant chains and the large businesses that require a lot of catering to come in to keep their employees happy and, you know, keep their, their business meetings running on schedule, all those things. So, I've been doing that for about 20 years now. Yeah.
How'd you wind up in Mansfield?
When moving to Texas and looking for a great place, the school districts were really important to me. My son was about to go into kindergarten, and I just wanted to know that he was gonna, you know, have a long educational career in a spot that really could provide him with a quality and loving environment, and Mansfield was it across the boards. Everybody raved, even people who lived up north raved about the school district here. I liked that it still felt small town in a way, because moving to the DFW Metroplex can be a little intimidating. And this, one of my first experiences was the Pickle Parade here, and I just, I loved it. I just thought it was so great, and it just embodied what I imagined Texas to be in my mind.
Mansfield, even though it's what, around 80,000 people now, and it was around, it was around 45, 50,000 when we moved here, but it still has that small-town feel to it.
Yeah, definitely.
So, Adam, you mentioned the two of you are boyfriend-girlfriend.
We are.
How, how did you meet?
Well, interesting enough, we're gonna take it back to the rink. It all goes back to the, everything goes through the rink. But anyway, I was, I was coaching her son, so I had coached her son Austin when he was an 8U, so we were familiar with each other. It was a couple years later, she was, I think you were reaching out to take private lessons again for Austin. And, you know, so we were both at the rink, and we ended up, and I don't think we've really talked about this, but we ended up having just this really good conversation. It was very short, but very, kind of like intense and like real, and she, she texted me, yes, she texted me a little bit later and said, "Hey, like, you know, it was really great talking to you. Would you like to grab coffee?" I don't drink coffee, but I wanted to go out with her. So, I said, "Yes." I said, "We should go to The Flying Squirrel at 7:00 PM." Turns out, they were not open at 7:00 PM, nor would I have any need to drink coffee at 7:00 PM, as I am not a coffee drinker. So, we switched up our plans, and we went to Chacha's for margaritas instead.
Yeah, he's always so busy at the rink, and I always enjoyed talking to him, and then, like you said, we, we kind of fell into a deeper conversation one day, and I was like, "Gosh, I really, like, I find this guy super interesting. Like, I wonder if it would be more conducive to get to know each other better if, if we just hung out outside." So, I was like, I was keeping it casual. I wasn't assuming anything, or I didn't even know if I liked you.
Yeah, and, and kind of looking back on it, she didn't know that we were actually dating until I had to stand her up for, I invited her to a Dallas Stars game that I ended up having to stand her up for, because I didn't feel well. And, you know, I think I just put in a text like, "Sorry, you know, I just, this dating thing is kind of new." She didn't realize it, so.
Wait, wait, we're dating?
I was, yeah.
I thought we were hanging out. I thought we were friends hanging out.
I had made that assumption, but yeah, so I was the, I was early to the first date, and I was early for, for saying that we were dating, but she went along with it, and yeah, it's been over almost a year and a half, and she's, she's still hanging out with me.
So, as boyfriend and girlfriend, you have started a, an enterprise together.
Yeah, because that's what you do.
Which I, which I think is really cool, that, and, and I love bringing, I love bringing small businesses on, especially where you don't, you don't own, you don't own a building. You don't, you're, you're not, it's, you're, you are the epitome of really a small business.
I don't think it gets much smaller, because that's just one person, because yeah, it's just us.
So, tell, tell the listening audience about the spot.
You know, we like to travel. We went, oh, this is when we went to New England. So, we, we had this nice trip, what was it, nine or 10-day trip? It was a long trip, but anyway, we stayed a few different places. The first place that we stayed was a little town in New York called Hudson. So, we were in Hudson, and we were kind of looking up, you know, you get to a new place, and you pull up Google, you know, "What should we do? What's, what's kind of fun around here?" And there was this, this bar slash lounge slash bookstore slash game activity area that was very popular there. So, we decided to go and check it out, and just the vibe of the place and the vibe of the people there and the energy there was really, really cool. And it wasn't a very large space, but you could tell that they had regulars, and it just, it had a really cool vibe to it. So, we were talking about like, "Man, Mansfield, it would be so cool if something was there." And I don't think that either one of us were talking about us making one. We just thought, "Hey, you know, this would be, you know, really kind of cool," and I feel like we kind of kept bringing it up. And then, you know, kind of an opportunity, which I'll let Melissa talk about a little bit, but an opportunity came to be that we could actually maybe make it happen.
And we, and it reminded me a lot of Mansfield, Hudson did, you know, older, established, quiet for the most part town, but investing a lot in, you know, just their downtown Main Street area and small businesses, and we walked into a lot of small businesses, and it was so cute and quaint, just like Mansfield. And I actually asked one guy, the pop-up jelly store guy, if you remember that. I said, "Are these, are these businesses actually small businesses?" You know, because sometimes they're not. Sometimes they're, they're, they've got a big, you know, conglomerate behind them, and he said, "Yeah," and, you know, he talked about all the little small business owners and everything, and I was like, "This is fantastic." So, you know, coming back here, I had actually left corporate catering and started my own catering sales business right before COVID. And my whole approach to that was that I wanted to work with small businesses, you know, these major corporations that are bringing in just vast amounts of food to feed their, their teams. They're going to the big chains, because the big chains are what's out there and prominent and, and known. And I thought, "Well, there's so many beautiful little gems in these small businesses and these, these communities, and it would be great to help get them some exposure." So, these big corporations can, can also support, you know, the local community and the local small businesses. So, that's what I had been doing right before COVID hit, and COVID changed a lot of things for everybody, as we all know. But in that process, I had met the owners of Big D Barbecue and started working with them and helping get their catering business off the ground.
Shout out to Jordy and Gary.
Shout out to Jordy and Gary.
And without them, this would have been, yeah, they were both rock stars and have been, and probably will continue to be. But big shout out to them, 100%.
Okay, sorry, we interrupted your story.
Yeah, no, that's okay. So, so, yeah, so that's kind of how things started, was, you know, I had this great relationship with these guys. They're so amazing. I love working with them, and they had expanded their locations to opening their brand-new Big D Barbecue site in Midlothian, which is a phenomenal site. It's beautiful, just great environment. Go check it out if you have a chance. And in doing that, we were doing a ton of catering out of the Mansfield location, but the dine-in business for lunch really hadn't recovered after COVID.
Right.
So, we were just talking about, "Well, what do we do with this space? We don't want to necessarily have two Big D Barbecues as, as they stand right now, so close to each other. So, how do we maybe take this and put a fresh spin on it? Maybe, you know, drive people in to check out something new and different, but still have that, you know, Big D Barbecue familiarity to it." So, that's where it was kind of born. It was this cross between and collaboration with them on, you know, "Let's, let's do some sort of spotted dog-themed, you know, like, it's a bookstore, but it's not. So, for us, it's a barbecue joint, but it's not." And, and we just put a fresh spin on it with something that we didn't feel like Mansfield necessarily had yet. So, it's, it's a lot of, you know, beers and wines that you maybe can't find in the grocery store or can't find in other restaurants. And the menu, we updated to include a lot of local products, local Texas ranchers, a lot of wild game meat. The food itself is very regeneratively sourced, meaning these ranchers and farmers are doing things in a way not to maximize efficiency and profits, but to maximize animal welfare, environmental impact, all of those, all of those things, which we thought the Mansfield, you know, population would appreciate, because this all used to be farm and ranch country a minute ago. So, yeah.
Now, I've, I've been to the spot twice.
Twice, yeah.
Twice. And so, not only do you have beers that are, shall we say, hard to find?
Yeah.
Okay, craft beers, but you also have some popular beers that are in the refrigerator there.
Yeah, yeah, we still have some of the domestics, some of just the, the go-tos, the easy ones, yeah.
The menu, it's not a huge menu, but it's an eclectic menu. I mean, bison meat quesadilla, which I, I had both times I visited.
I would say, yeah, I would say as of right now, it's probably our most popular.
Yeah, they, they're all been popular, and the menus are potentially, I'm testing new recipes today, potentially about to double if all goes well. But yeah, we wanted to do something different, something you can't get every day, and, you know, as, as a country, we eat a lot of beef and chicken.
Sure.
That's what we eat. However, there are much more nutrient-dense species out there, species like the bison, a keystone species that used to be in populations of the millions in this country. So, bringing awareness back to them, their important role in this, on this land, and, and just introducing them as something that is not, I think a lot of people get in their head that, "Oh, it's gonna taste gamey." And I would ask, "Did it, did it taste gamey to you?"
It did not taste gamey at all.
Yeah, I got the same feedback with the wild boar tacos, and those are.
Wait, wait, wild boar tacos?
We didn't have those on the menu when you were here, Steve. So, these are a new, these are a new item. You'll have to, you'll have to.
Yeah, well, and wild boar, they're an invasive species to Texas, so.
Isn't that just, it's pork?
It is, yeah. Yeah, the wild boar tacos are, are an awesome addition. Everybody who's tried them has said they're not gamey at all. They taste fantastic. I love it, so.
What else are you trying to, to put on the menu? You mentioned you're gonna try out some new things. What's, what's in the brain of Melissa?
Well, we have bison hot dogs. Those, those just hit the shelves. Wanted to get those in for Memorial Day and think those will do well through the summer. And I'm testing out some smoked cod for a salad potentially, and I got some elk in as well. So, we're gonna play around with some elk recipes, and just, just continue to play with it. The, the idea is, is that we have some of our favorites on the menu, some of our go-tos. So, Steve, when you come in, you can still get that quesadilla that you love, but also bring fresh flavors in, just so people can continue to try new things.
Going back on the theme of the bookstore in Hudson, did I see over the weekend, you had some type of pop-up for Mother's Day? I saw photos on Facebook, but I can't remember what you were doing.
Oh, we have bakery items and charcuterie boards. We, we really stock those up during our busier days, which are typically Fridays and Saturdays. And so, I partner with a couple of girls that help do all the recipes for that and help get me stocked up for that, since I'm, you know, the, the solo kitchen chef and prep cook.
Yeah, she has been doing it.
And everything right now. So, so they really help me out in that regard, and so we have, and we, we still do have some beautiful cookie and cupcake sets.
But they were like specially, they were specially made for Mother's Day. So, she, she actually cut out in cheese. What did it say? Best mom?
Best mom.
Best mom.
Yeah, and then this is like cut out in cheese. It's just, it looks really good, but they were, yeah, they were kind of like specially made. They had flowers in it. They're just, you know.
They're artists. They're food artists as well, and I think that's what we, that's what we like, is, is just bringing cute, themed, and, and, you know, unique stuff in where people really like care about what they're putting together.
Yeah. The, we only have a few minutes left here. Give the audience an idea of the feel when you walk through the doors. Now, you're walking through the doors of Big D Barbecue. Big D manages the kitchen when it comes to their catering. The rest of it really is, is The rest of it really is, is.
We're managing it, yeah.
Are you leasing from Big D?
No, we're, we're partners with them through and through. So, but they, they, you know, they really let us kind of just be the managers of the spot. So we're the full-time employees and managers and we are your chef and server and bartender all in one. But yeah, it's Big D's space still. So kind of like the bookstore had a bar in it, which was unique. It's Big D BBQ, but it has a lounge in it that's a little bit different.
All right, so you walk through the doors. Describe the feel of the spot.
When you first get there, the, the first little entryway that you come into, that's where you have, you know, the charcuterie boards and you have some cool little art, art on the wall. But then when you turn right, there, there's just, just this opening where you can see the lounge. I love the lighting inside of it. The bar that we built is beautiful. So it's almost just like you're surprised when you turn your head to the right, what you see, because you're not really expecting it from that first little, little entryway. And it's kind of like, we, because from that lounge, you can see who's coming in. So Steve, when you came in, and you happen to know three or four people that were there, they could see you as soon as you walked in. So I really feel like that energy is almost just like when that door opens, everybody's kind of, hey, is it Steve? Who is it? Is it somebody that we know? Because we, you know, we've started to have a lot of regulars. So I feel like the, the energy is just a place to kind of relax and to chill. And the, the chairs that we have, they're, they're super comfortable. You walk into some restaurants and they're kind of, they want you to stay long enough just to eat your food, but then to get out so that more people could come in. I feel like the energy at the spot is like, hey, like relax for a while, as long as you want to. Like if you want to come and read a book and have a glass of wine, you can do that. If you want to, if you want to head up to the bar and sit next to whoever and watch some sports, you can do that. It's just any type of lounging that you would want to do can be done inside the spot. And I feel like it has that energy, almost like it's a, it's a welcoming energy and we're not trying to push anybody or cycle through or we just, we want people to take their time and enjoy that space with us.
It, it had a very cheers type, type feel to it. And when you, when, like I, you said, when I walked through the door and it was like, dude, everybody knows, everybody knows your name. That it's, it's, it's kind of the, the neighborhood, although this would be Mansfield wide neighborhood place to, place to hang out.
We wanted it to kind of feel like a living room at a friend's house. You know, you, you were first walk in and it's the boutique market is what we wanted that feel to be like. I sell all of the wild game meats. So you can take them home and cook them if you want, or you can sit down and enjoy it cooked for you. But we wanted you to come in, have this boutique market experience if you want to enjoy that. But then you are, you were immediately welcomed into this, this lounge, kind of, you know, my best friend's living room type environment, or I can belly up to the bar and cheer for my sports team type thing. But we wanted it to be comfortable and welcoming. And, you know, I, I hear this new phrase that instead of saying, what did you have for dinner last night? You should say, who did you have dinner with last night? And that's what we wanted. We wanted it to be obviously a culinary experience and a, and a beverage experience, but a community and a relationship experience as well. So that's what we're going for.
Let's get down to the details. Tell the audience where the spot is, when you're open. Give all, give all the details.
Okay, so address first, right? Okay, 226 North Walnut Creek. See Mansfield, Texas. See, I've, I've typed that out enough times now that I got that one down. As far as our schedule, we're still not a hundred percent sure. We're, we're still figuring out the traffic and kind of when, because we also, we have other things that we have to do. I'm still working full-time. You know, she's raising Austin, really trying to figure out what days, you know, makes sense to work, at least for right now, you know, until, you know, we can get some employees down the road. But I would say as of right now, I mean, we're always, always going to be open Thursday through Saturday, you know, Tuesday. I think the, the only days we're really trying to figure out right now are Sunday, Monday, Wednesday.
Yeah, so Fridays and Saturdays, 11:00 AM till late for sure. You can bank on that.
Yeah, and we do have a Facebook, which is just the spot at Big D BBQ.
Well, congratulations. Again, I love bringing in the, the small business, the, those that have an idea, they may not have the funds to do it, but you know what? I'm just going to jump in the water and, and see what happens.
Yeah.
And gosh, you're taking a risk and, and, and I love it.
We're treading water right now.
Yeah, we are.
But you know what? I'm, I'm in a, I'm in a 10 by 10 studio right now and that's all I can afford.
Yeah.
And it's working.
It's working, it's lovely too.
You, sometimes you just have to take that, that, that leap of faith.
Well, because anybody that ends, ends up being successful, I feel like it comes from starting off this way, like you, without the risk, there is no reward later on down the road. And, you know, the thing is, is that we're working, you know, because it's, it's okay to work for somebody, but when you work for yourself and you are the one that's in charge of your success or failures, it really, you know, it pushes you a lot harder. And I think that, I don't know, we're, we're up to the task and we're having a good time. It can be scary, but I think at the end of the day, we're, you know, we have little meetings every day where we're just saying, hey, this is working and we're doing it. Like let's keep.
We're having so much fun.
We are having a lot of fun. Not that much sleep. We're not sleeping a whole lot. We are, we are having a lot of fun though.
As Warren Zevon said, once said, I'll, I'll sleep when I'm dead.
Yeah, that's, that's probably, yeah, that might be the next time, but.
No, sleep is important. We're, I'm, I'm very much a sleeper and we are taking very good care of ourselves. But right now, it's just a lot of adrenaline, a lot of excitement, just a lot of fun. And we, like, we're so happy when we're there and we just, we've had such good customers discover us, friends and family come in.